All right. Welcome, everybody, to our September 12th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can I please have a motion to call the meeting to order? So move Jen Second. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
And I just need a motion to amend the agenda. We are going to have to table a intermunicipal resolution. So please have a motion to amend the agenda. So moved Shanna Second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have our student liaisons and our WTA tonight. Do you believe it's Trista, Roman, and Lauren?
Yes. It's exciting.
Some new faces. And then welcome back Lauren.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
How is everybody doing? Cool. It's so good to see everybody. I'm seeing some new faces, too. So I'm just looking around and trying to say hi. With that being said, hello, I'm Lauren. I go to Webster Thomas, and I'm so excited to be back, and I'm also a senior. So yay. So, moving forward, during our first week of school, we enjoyed seeing some new and old faces, and even a mini heatwave. Despite it feeling like a million degrees inside the school building, we enjoyed seeing our friends, staff, and favorite teachers. Next up, on the 13th, from 6:30 to 8:30, there will be an open house for parents to walk their students' schedules with them, meet and talk with their teachers, and have some great food from the food trucks. Next up, with our e-hall passes, students will use their iPhones instead of a manual hall pass to go wherever they may need to go. Please know that this is a better and much healthier choice for students and staff to keep the building safe and a better place for Thomas. Though there may be some kinks within the app, staff and administrators have been working hard to make sure that the app functions the way that it should. For our freshman students, please make sure to turn in your permission slips for the annual Leaders in Service Experience on September 12th. This will be a wonderful opportunity that you won't want to miss. Next up, Link Crew and Freshmen will be doing their annual kickball tournament. Make sure to mark your calendars from Monday, September 18th, from 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. Now for clubs. Interested in Dungeon and Dragons? Talk to Mr. Ferris in Room 130 or Mrs. Nylander in Room 316 for more info. Are you interested in service and serving our great Rochester community? Join Klee Club in Room 405 after school. Next up, our Model UN is also back in action, and if interested, go see Ms. Yang in Room 10 and 210 after school for more info. The Webster Show Choir is also looking for new members. If interested, please see Ms. DeAngelo either at Thomas Auditions or Schrader Auditions. The Titan Garage Club is now open to any and all students who have taken Consumer Auto. The Auto Lab is open from 3:15 to 4:15 every Tuesday after school. Auditions for the Fall Drama are happening. See Mr. Stetzel in Room 111 for more. Next up, and Driver's Ed is also available for registration until September 14th. The PSAT is also approaching, and it's available to juniors to take it on October 14th. Also being said, the PSAT and SAT, they are both going digital, so bring a fully charged Chromebook and please be registered by Thursday, September 13th. Save the date for Senior Parent Night on September 27th at 6:00 p.m. in the North Cafe. We will be discussing the college process, and all seniors will be given time in their classes, counselors, to talk about this as well. On October 3rd, that is also our Junior Night, our Junior Parent Night, and this will be packed with some great info to help your junior out this year. On Monday, October 2nd, at 6:30, Galisona Training Center will be hosting a college fair night. Next, registration for the H Training Program is now open for the 2023 through 2024 school year. Webster CSD residents are also invited to attend two community forums, which will highlight the proposed building or future capital improvement project. The $85 million project focuses on providing a safe educational environment for all students with zero tax impact for district residents. Forums will be held on Thursday, September 21st in the Webster Schrader High School Library from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. and on Thursday, September 28th, at Webster Thomas High School in the school's library from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Community members will have the opportunity to learn more and ask questions about building our future, including planned upgrades at all 11 schools. As a reminder, Webster CSD's Building Your Future Capital Project will take place on Wednesday, October 11th from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the voting process at Webster Schrader High School Gym. Now from the Athletics Department, Girls Cross Country. The girls beat the Heat and the competition, dominating the same three schools. Senior Natalia S. took individual honors in the race, as the Titans packed seven girls in the top 10. The Titans' cross-country team opened their season with over in Churchill, Chi-Lai, Brockport, and at Webster Schrader last night in the Webster Park. Senior Jerry L. won individually, as Thomas put five guys in the top 10. For girls tennis, the team lost 5-1 versus Victor, but the team will next take on Hilton. For boys soccer, the team opened the season with a 1-0 win against Webster Schrader. Wednesday evening, the team traveled to Penfield and lost 2-0. Game ended early due to lightning. For girls soccer, the team opened the season with a 3-1 win at Penfield Tuesday evening. The Titans are 2-0 this season. For field hockey, the Titans beat Hilton in their first game of the season 2-1. Next up in girls golf, the Lakers' girls golf team lost to Mercy on August 30th and the 31st, beat Penfield on August 31st though, and lost to Victor in a shortened match due to rain Thursday night. The Lakers are 1-3 on this season. For girls volleyball, the Titans traveled to Brighton last Tuesday evening, and they won 3-0. For boys volleyball, the Lakers' boys volleyball beat Spencerport Saturday in five sets. Instead of taking a win on a missed official decision, the players reversed the call in Spencerport's favor. Webster followed up the next point with a match-winning kill to truly earn the victory. For football, Thomas traveled to East Ridge last Friday night. They came away with a 26-9 win. Thank you and good night.
Thanks, Lauren.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rombikova, and running into my side is Tristan Bauer. Both of us are seniors, and we are excited to be the 2023 to 2024 Student Council Board Liaisons. Tristan and I are very excited and thankful for this opportunity to represent our school and fellow warriors. To begin, we are happy to share that the Webster Schrader Girls' Flag Football Team quarterback, Ellie Oakren, was chosen to play at the halftime of the Buffalo Bills preseason game against the Colts. She threw a touchdown and led Section 5 to a victory over Section 6. She was also able to meet some of the players. The rest of the team was able to go and support with free tickets sponsored by the Bills. Also, our amazing football team helped out the Webster Hope Garage Sale. Hope is our local social justice ministry responding to special emergency needs of Webster, New York. There, our great players help carry donations of furniture and household items for those in need.
Hello there. All right. I've got a few bits of other news for you that's going on in Schrader. So, our great senior class kicked off the year with senior sunrise last Friday. Despite the cloudy weather, spirits remained high as we ate custom donuts and bagels with cream cheese kicking off the year. We would like to say us seniors bring sunshine anywhere we go, even when it's cloudy. Tonight, we will also have our kickball under the lights for our freshman class of 2027. Link Crew leaders such as Roman will be attending to make a great freshman experience at Schrader. That said, I can assure you that, given all of the wonderful things that we have planned for this school year, the state of Schrader is strong. In fact, stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all three of you.
All right. It's gonna be a great year. Thank you, all three of you.
Yep. Thanks, Joan.
Hi, Joan.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Again, how do I follow that? I can, but not on tape. Oh, I would embarrass my own children so bad. Okay. I am Joan Bardanas. For people who don't know me, I am the WTA liaison. I have been here for four years as the liaison, this year four. And it's been awesome, Maria. I'm so glad I get to report out to you as well. We all do. And everyone else on the board, all of you familiar faces, we see. I will make this very short, because I can see the audience and see the little feet, and I can't wait to hear what they want. So a little selfish. We are 850 strong. We have added over 60 new members this past summer. We are looking forward, yes, we had our exec board meeting. We went really long. There's so much to plan for this year. There's so much on the docket that is being planned, and so much that continues to work. As you guys say, our high school liaisons make our job very easy, because they end up reporting so much more than I can. I'm given shorter time. But we love it. We've done this summer, we've done hundreds of hours of professional development, which was driven by conversations last year when you constantly ask, what more do you need? What do we need? What are our next steps? Where do we want to go? What do we want to revisit? People across our district, at every level, did some things in the summer, whether it was some guidance for students at the instructional level, our summer recovery program, which is going strong, answering more and more questions and approaching things where it doesn't necessarily need to be summer school. And our WTA's teachers step up and teach in different content areas to kids who are just falling below the standard and need that hurdle help, but at the same time, not a six-week program. It works great, because people have vacations. Some people have sports, and they're really important to people. So we try to balance that and account for that, at the same time, holding our kids accountable for, this is what counts. This is what gets your name on a high school diploma. And it starts, we all know, we're all in the room. It starts long before they got to high school. Our younger kids spend some instructional time as well, as well as our extended school year, even in rooms where they did, and they deserve some nice cold beverages of water and juice of the air conditioning and Wi-Fi and little glitches here and there that we all continue to work through. Our professional development is strong. Our PTSA, our blankets are woven. I don't know where WTA starts and PTSA starts. I don't think there's a line. There truly isn't. We really are looking forward. People are applying and volunteering before sheets are coming out for the coat apparel, for the food distribution. What are we bringing for our backpack lunches on Teachers Teach Teachers, which we are all immersed in, no matter what bargaining unit you belong to. So it's pretty cool. October, our WTA cares not only will have teams on our making strides against breast cancer, but there's also teams, and there's different, I understand there's cycling as well as walking and running with the Wilmont Warrior Weekend, which a team is going to be held in memory of two of our teachers and coaches who unfortunately lost their battle, but their memory lives on years later. Thank you. Thank you to the student liaisons. Congratulations to all of you, and I hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you, Joan.
Are you introducing this next part? Never mind.
Oh, I think you are.
Up next, we have our retirees and our citizen award recognition.
Hi, I'm Janet Gibson, and I'm here to represent the WREA, or otherwise known as the Webster Retired Teachers Association. The 2022-23 school year wrapped up with a lot of excitement as students throughout the district celebrated milestones and accomplishments. At the elementary level, this meant presenting the Citizenship Award to deserving fifth graders. Given it Fifth Grade Moving Up Day, or school-wide Flag Day celebrations, the award is gifted by the Webster Retired Educators Association to the fifth grader at each of the district's seven elementary schools who best models the attributes of scholarship, service, leadership, and sportsmanship in all areas of life. The WREA presented these honorees with a medal, and their names were added to the Citizenship Award winner's plaque that hangs in their school. We have a few retired teachers here tonight who are proud to announce this year's recipients. The first teacher that's going to do that is Al Harry.
From DeWitt Road School, the recipient is Laney Sagona. Laney, can you please come up, so we may acknowledge you? And there's a little yellow X here, and if you want to stand on that, that would be great. DeWitt's winner, Laney Sagona, starts each day with a positive attitude and ready to lend a helping hand. In the classroom, she demonstrates many successful habits and is a model of cooperation, accountability, respect, and excellence. Care behavior at all times. She puts 100% effort into her learning, is an active participant, and asks intriguing questions that spark curiosity in others. Laney also demonstrates great leadership qualities, from applying new strategies to helping others during group work. Her positivity is contagious. Laney is involved in many activities both in and out of school, including band, chorus, safety patrol, Ridge Runners, Irish dancing, Girl Scouts, and lacrosse. She takes their involvement in school's activities seriously, from practicing for concerts to volunteering to set up for events. She even brought her community involvement into the school to teach her peers an Irish dance lesson. Congratulations.
Hold on. Yep, hold on, Laney, rate this. We got something for you. Go ahead, Mrs. Bardanas.
Yeah, Laney, you can sit down, and then we, just so everyone else knows, we're gonna take a big picture of the whole group after. So, thanks.
Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Heidi Zastani.
I would like to call up Juliana Godo Gomez from Clem North. Juliana Godo Gomez, Clem North's honoree, shows leadership qualities and caring attitudes and is kind and helpful to others. She excels both in the classroom and in the community. Words used to describe her are brave, hardworking, and reliable. In school, Juliana surpassed her fifth-grade ST math journey, working her way to the seventh-grade material, all out of her own desire to learn and improve. She is a member, was a member, of the Clem North Chorus in the band through which she participated twice in Solo Fest. She consistently promotes kindness and inclusivity while staying true to herself in what is important to her. Outside of school, Juliana has been a Girl Scout since kindergarten, earned her Blue Belt in Karate, and enjoys singing and playing the piano. Last summer, she joined Lakefront Soccer Club, which led her to take the initiative to join Ridge Runners at school to improve her endurance and stamina for the soccer field. She also enjoys sharing her Latino background through dancing and participation in the group's Cultural Latinos in Rochester. Congratulations, Juliana. And next, we will have Kathy Foster.
And I'd like to call up Connor Beach from Clem South, please.
Connor Beach consistently exhibits the characteristics of the Citizenship Award. He is reliable, dependable, respected, trustworthy, and responsible, and kind and considerate to all others, both inside and outside of the classroom. Connor has shown sportsmanship at daily recess and class activities, basketball, and becoming a part of the Ridge Runners. He is also a part of the Clem South Chorus and Percussion Section of the school band, even earning them a spot in the All-County Band. Connor does his best in every task presented to him, advocating for himself and others when needed, and setting and achieving short-term and long-term goals. Outskied the school, he is involved in Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. He shows leadership by being a positive role model to his peers, stepping up when needed, accepting and persevering through challenges, and being inclusive and respectful to all. Congratulations, Connor. And now I'd, and now I'd like to present Diane Weiskopf. It should probably all know.
It's been a while. I would like to invite Quinn Doherty from Plank North to please come up. Quinn is Plank North's winner, shows commitment in all he does. He pushes himself to do his best and follows through on all assignments and activities in school. An active member of the Plank North community, he is a flag raiser and part of the morning show crew. He participated in Battle of the Books and was part of the After School Ridge Runners. Out of school, Quinn plays basketball and baseball on various teams. Whether Quinn is playing a game in gym class or working with his group on a novel in the classroom, he is able to set the right tone for a positive and productive experience. He is a leader as well as a team player. Quinn is respected by his peers and is a role model to all. He is honest, caring, and takes school seriously, setting high expectations for himself. He has built a strong foundation on which to grow. Thank you.
And next, Janet Gibson will represent Plank South.
I would like to call up Lila Bowler. Lila exhibits the exceptional qualities of good citizenship, leadership, and character. She has been a shining example of a role model, both in and out of school. Lila rocks the stage with her musical talent in band and chorus, embraces the adventurous spirit of scouting, shows her determination as a runner, and even assisted as a reliable bus manager. But Lila's impact goes beyond school activities. She dedicates her time to serve others in the community, volunteering and making a positive difference. Lila's kindness, integrity, and selflessness have left a lasting impression on Plank South. She is an inspiration to her peers and reminds everyone of the true meaning of good citizenship. Thank you so much, Lila, and congratulations. And next, Kathy Foster.
I'd like to call up Alexander Blak from Schlegel Road School.
Alexander Black, Schlegel Road's award winner, shows exemplary character, consistent use of the care attributes, and is a daily role model for others. She displays those qualities effortlessly, because she is the core of who she is. Lexi is self-motivated and driven to produce high-quality work. She takes pride in learning while remaining humble whenever she is recognized. She is also constantly willing to assist others and wants to see everyone do their very best. Lexi is a loyal, compassionate, and honest friend. Her actions and words consistently build others up. Choosing to be kind, showing empathy, and being her highest self comes naturally to Lexi. She is a quiet leader who leads by example, as recognized by her peers and staff, both of who voted for her. She takes seriously school responsibilities, including orchestra, chorus, and courtyard crew ambassador. Lexi is just as active outside of school, participating on a Dynamo Premier Soccer Team and the U.S. Youth Soccer Olympic Development Program. Dance, skiing, swimming, and church. Congratulations, Lexi. We're proud of you. And I give it back to Janet Gibson.
Okay, I would like to call up Vivian Dibella from State Road.
Vivian demonstrates care in all settings, strives to do her best in all subject areas, and drives learning forward by asking great questions, making connections, and sharing ideas. She is willing to try new things and works hard at succeeding. Above all, Vivian is a compassionate friend and peer. She surrounds herself with like-minded peers, encouraging others to do their best, cheers on others, is a dedicated teammate, works with others to show their best selves, includes others, uses kind words, and problem solves with ease. In school, Vivian plays clarinet in the school band and is in the chorus. She also was a flag bearer, bus buddy, kindergarten classroom helper, and ST math helper. Outside of school, she plays softball. Her peers and teachers cite her as being a good teammate and sport, kind, inclusive, a great role model, helpful with schoolwork and friendships, someone who treats everyone with respect and kindness, a trustworthy friend, an upstander, and a leader. Thank you, Vivian, for all you do. Congratulations.
After the picture, we would like to invite the recipients and their families to meet us directly downstairs for some refreshments to celebrate your achievements, and just follow us down. We'll show you where it is. And a special thank you to the board for having us today.
And just before we do, I just want to say a couple words as well. First of all, to our students, again, thank you so much for joining us tonight. But another huge thank you for joining us on opening day. I know how important that was for our staff and how special it was to have you all there with us. So congratulations to all of you again. Also, to all of the families that are here with our students. You have raised some amazing kids, and we are so grateful for you, and also for making sure that you were a part of our opening day as well. And third and final, but last but not least, to the WREA members that are here tonight representing an amazing organization. Thank you for taking the time to be here with us tonight and make this such a special event and such a special occasion. So, and to our principals and teachers and staff members that are out there, too. Thanks for joining us. So now with that, if everybody, let's see, if we could have the seven students, the five of you, and Janice and I, and we'll join everybody over on the stairs. And Paul, if you don't mind coming and taking our picture, we'll get that, and then everybody can go downstairs. All right. So, as I kind of mentioned, with the students being there, making it such a special day, I also want to mention that it was a great opening and that our district is off to a great start for the 2023-2024 school year. And it was my pleasure to visit every school with Mrs. Land on opening day, and we also got the transportation. And I don't think Paul's, there we go. I was gonna say, maybe Paul's not back yet, but you can see some of the pictures there on your screens, because the most important things was the smiles that we saw. They were abundant that day and hopefully continue to be that way throughout the year. And that we certainly look forward to another great year. Next, I want to draw our attention and highlight something that happened here yesterday at Spry Middle School. So Spry Middle School had a special 9/11 flag-raising ceremony yesterday with the leadership of Spry teacher Megan Peepko and support from interim principal Jackie Saunders, Spry applied for and was granted a national freedom flag from the Freedom Flag Foundation, which will be flown every year on Patriot Day, the anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks on our nation. In addition, the freedom, to the freedom flag, Spry was also awarded and received a World Trade Center steel artifact that was recovered from Tower One at Ground Zero in, in New York City. And that artifact will be displayed at Spry for the next year, along with the flag and an explanation of what these two important objects commemorate. And just a side note, there are two in the country, and we were awarded one of them. So a really cool thing for, for us and Webster and certainly for Spry. Both the flag and the steel were shared with all students during yesterday's moving flag, moving flag ceremony. In addition, district employees who also serve our community as first responders were in attendance and recognized for their service. And so again, just a huge thank you to everyone at Spry who made that educational ceremony of remembrance come together in such a meaningful way. Next up, if I could invite, I'm seeing Mr. Whedore, if you would please join us. Also, yes, Mrs. Baloo and Mrs. Lasky, if all three of you could join us here at the table. Sticking with our campus news, the three of them are going to give us some updates from our secondary, our elementary, and from our services. So I think, who's starting? I don't remember. Mr., actually, we got to ask Paul. Is it, is it Laura? Yeah, Mrs. Baloo first.
All right.
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here. I'm Laura Baloo, the proud principal of Clem North, and I get the honor to share some news from our elementary schools from the start of the school year. And so what I did is I asked my fellow colleagues what makes them proud of their school, starting off the school year this, thus far, and I got some answers that I'm going to share with all of you, starting with Dewitt Road Elementary School. At Dewitt, we are proud of our new shared learning spaces. You can see some of them in the pictures here. Mark was sharing with me that they have some new spaces, some new furniture to go along with the spaces, and it's really helping with instructional engagement. Next, at Clem South, they're proud to focus on growth this year. They have T-shirts for their staff. Their theme is "Here We Grow," and they're trying to grow not only in academic, social, emotional skills, but also in attendance. That's been a goal for their school this year, to improve the attendance of their students. Next, at Plank North Elementary, they're proud of their students and their pioneer pride. You can see a lot of funny faces in these pictures that were shared with Mr., with, shared with me from Mr. Bodensigner. Next, at Plank South, we are proud of our positive and welcoming culture as we establish relationships, something that's so important in all of our elementary schools and certainly in our secondary schools as well, is, you know, establishing community at the beginning of the school year. We do that using responsive classrooms, through morning meetings, through community circles, something that is a huge part of what we do. And so these pictures, you can see the community that is formed within these spaces. Next, at Schlegel, we're proud of our crew, and they have, I love that picture, that's in the top-left corner of their staff and students, looks like welcoming students into the school year with their crew flags raised. Again, it's all about relationships and getting to know each other at the beginning of the school year, then maintaining those throughout the year. At State Road, they're proud to welcome their students back for another exciting school year. Chalking on our sidewalks is a pretty common thing that you'll see across the elementary schools to welcome students back. All extra adults are always out welcoming students to make sure everyone gets to their locations okay, and giving hugs, and, you know, it's so good to reconnect. At Owl, we are proud to be great friends with each other by taking turns and listening. I'm super proud of this because I see one of my former Clem North stars pictured here. He was in UPK with us last year, but it's so exciting to, once again, you're going to see this common theme of relationships and connecting and working on social, emotional skills. In Webster Pre-K, our Pre-K is proud to welcome nearly 340 Pre-K students and their families to nine of our Webster schools. So as you know, we've included Thomas. You might be talking, I don't even know if you're talking about that.
A little bit.
All right, a little bit. Having some UPK, or some Pre-K friends joining, it's really exciting always to see that collaboration between our high school students and our youngest learners, our Pre-K students. At Clem North, I saved the best for last. At Clem North, we're proud of our family engagement, and so pictured here, down in the bottom left-hand corner is a picture from our family orientation day or evening. At Clem North, we had two events, and so that's something that actually all seven elementary schools, we focused on family orientation for the first time this year. We had a really great discussion over the summer at our admin retreat, and we were talking about what events we have to welcome families back to the school year. And it was very common across all of our schools to have supply drop-offs and curriculum nights and different ways to connect, reconnect, and share information and have our students be able to bring their supplies in. But we decided to rebrand this year and come up with a family orientation event that does all of those things. And at each of our schools, we took some data, and I can share, the Clem North data was outstanding. We had almost, very close to, it was in the 90%, almost 100% participation by families. I think it was really helpful having two events at Clem North, an evening event and a daytime event, to try to appeal to as many families as possible. But our goal was to get families into the building to connect. At Clem North, we had a mural that we worked on together, a really simple one. It's, it's hard to even call it a mural, but it was really simple, thumbprints to show that we're all connected on a Clem North Pride big poster that's in our hallway. Our kids got to drop off their supplies, meet their teachers, see their classrooms, and there was a lot of exchange of information between our instructors and our families. So that was a really great event, and I'm sure we'll be analyzing our data across the board, across the district, to look at how it went at all of our schools. But we are really proud of this, and it was really a collaboration of all administrators working on this event, as well as some of our lead teachers throughout our summer work. So we are grateful for that, those opportunities. This is a picture at Clem North from this event. And finally, thank you. We have a lot of pride, and I'm glad to be here this evening, and the school year has been just excellent. So thank you so much for your support. We look forward to having you visit our schools this year.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Glenn Whedore, the principal for Thomas High School. I have to say, it is nice to be able to go first in one of these campus reports because there's a ton of information from the start of school, and everyone is happy to share. So a lot of information coming to you from our, our secondary schools and programs. I know that classes started last week, but for our high schools, really, we started about three weeks ago with the return of our sports programs, as well as our high school link and middle school web programs. We began meeting with our incoming fifth graders and ninth graders about two to three weeks ago and starting that transition, getting them ready for high school supply list, locker nights, all of those fun things. All four schools also hosted family orientations as well for those incoming fifth graders and ninth graders. At both high schools, as you can see from some of these photos, students and staff are all smiles and happy to be back. We have some exciting things going on at the high school level, starting with a relatively, I hadn't heard about this, but I saw Mr. Benz's slide about their, and one of the students mentioned it too, the senior sunrise. So I've seen, I've heard that going on at a couple of schools in the county, so I'm getting interested in that. We'll see if Thomas kids want to get up early on the first day. I don't know. I don't know, based on my experience.
Yeah, food, food, food.
Have to be some really good food. Must be some really good donuts at Trader. But they look, you know, a little groggy-eyed in those pictures there, but I'm sure that's a moment they'll remember forever. At Thomas, we are continuing our focus on service learning and student leadership with students spending this, this past Saturday constructing beds for Sleep in Heavenly, Heavenly Peace Organization, and that's a program that works to ensure that no student or no, no child sleeps on the floor. This week, we're starting a very ambitious service project where all freshmen, all ninth graders, over 300 students, will have a two-hour block of service where they go to Eden Gardens, which has been designated as a, not designated, but it is, a food desert within the city of Rochester. And we're going to be taking groups of 30 to 40 freshmen accompanied by their link crew leaders and ninth grader teachers to work in two-hour shifts, weeding gardens, preparing those beds for winter and spring planting again. So as mentioned by Mrs. Baloo, we also have a UPK classroom, which is very exciting. So we have 18 little titans that are running around the school. And it's been a very nice addition to this, to our school, seeing that they, they start about an hour for the high school students. So when they, when we walk in, they're already, you know, walking in their formations down the hallway, and it's, it's really cute. So we really love having them. And this mirrors a program, as, as Laura mentioned, it's at nine of our schools, and Trader's had a couple of classrooms for a few years, so we're really, really happy to have that at Thomas. At the middle schools, they've really dug into their building goals of enhancing climate and culture. To do this, they're emphasizing why each student matters in their schools. Staff, staff wants students and staff to look inside and find their purpose, to really examine their positive attributes, the characteristics that make them unique, and the reason why the world is a better place because they are in it. This is a national movement, which was originally created as a response by high school art counseling departments to three great losses at Chelsea High School in Michigan. So this campaign is a, is a proactive, meaningful way to help students build a positive self-image. There's also some fun events coming up for middle school students, and I know that this Friday is a back-to-school bash at Willink, so I'm sure there's a bunch of Willink students who are looking forward to spending the night together. And lastly, our special programs at the secondary level, Owl and Goal, have been busy transitioning students back to school. Oops, I went a little bit too far, I think. So time has been spent helping those sixth graders adjust to the middle school environment, forging new relationships, relationships, strengthening the old ones, and reconnecting with Owl parents at Open House. In addition, lastly, Goal has had a great start to the year. Mrs. Safe shared that they debuted a new theme for their year, which is Goal, where we know everyone by their name, their strength, and their story. This year, Goal is starting with a record 44 students, so a very strong program, and it's been their largest opening day cohort in years. So they spent some of their first week last week team-building at Camp Arrowhead, a YMCA facility, and all of the Goal students participated, and they built new bonds and created some friendships. So with September nearing its midpoint, we are excited for the new year and looking forward to inspiring our students in our secondary classrooms. And I would also just like to take a moment, I know Mrs. Blue mentioned it, to thank our awesome PTSI organizations. This year, they once again did a chalk, chalked the walk and welcomed kids back on opening day, and I know I speak for Mr. Benz and the other secondary principals when I say that we couldn't do it without the support of PTSA and the community. So that's it for me, and thank you.
Before I get started, I would like to say at Thomas, the cute tall kid and the cute short kid, Cameron and Tyler, I have a grandchild who's UPK and a grandchild who's a senior at Thomas. And we have some great pictures of the two of them spending their days together, so very, very exciting for both of them. I'm Jane Lasky. I am the director of community ed and facility scheduling. I've worked for the district for about eight years. My presentation will be about what we do in community ed and what I also do in terms of facility scheduling and for master library. So I have a coworker, Stephanie. She works part-time throughout the year. One of the things that we do is put together the Community Education and Aquatics Guide that goes to every resident three times a year in the Webster School District. Most folks should have gotten that in September. Here's a little bit about community ed. So the processes are, we, we see what's happening around the district, around the town, some themes, and we program mostly for adults. We have some programs for kids during the school year, and then we have a pretty robust program during the summer. So our enrollment is really strong in the summer and really strong in the winter. We utilize all the schools, and I think what makes the program so attractive to adults in Webster is we get the advantage of using the art rooms. We use the home ec rooms. We use some of the multipurpose spaces, so we can really offer and showcase to residents what Webster Schools has to offer. People really enjoy being in the buildings and seeing the excitement by what's on the walls and learning about what the kids are doing. So it's a pretty robust program. We're certainly not revenue-driven, but we, what we do is if we hire a subcontractor, we pay them their fee, and then we add something for lights and facilities, credit card transactions. So some of the popular classes, oil painting, defensive driving, psychic, medium classes, stained glass, again, taking advantage of all the art space that we have in Webster. The kids tend to sign up for Spanish lessons. There are many kids in many of the schools that come in the evening and take Spanish lessons. The other ones are, of course, doing anything someone can do to get their license. We also have Webster School teachers doing SAT prep, which is very, we do that throughout the year, and that's very beneficial to, to students. So there's just a picture of a birding class, an oil painting class, and a stained glass class. Those came late. Another part of community education that many of you may know about, and Lauren mentioned that we're ending registration tomorrow, is driver's ed. We subcontract with BOSI's, and we offer driver's ed four times a year to anyone in Webster. It's housed at Thomas and at Trader, and as you can see, we typically max out at 40, 42, depending on how many cars we get. So the nice thing about that program is, at least for parents and some kids, is they get their night license at 17 if they pass all the requirements. So that's something that we're really happy to be able to offer, and we have had for a number of years. Another aspect of our program that I started a few years ago was a summer enrichment program. About February, I start to contact staff and teachers in the Webster School District to see if they'd like to share their talent. It could be something that they teach. It could be something that they have an interest in. It could be they just want to spend some time with a different age group. So teachers and staff members in Webster submit a proposal. We plan all the details, handle the registration, and hope that kids sign up. And based on our enrollment numbers, again, those programs are really well-attended. Our Webster Theater for Youth program is taught by three music teachers. We had 72 kids. Most of the other programs run anywhere from 10 to 20 kids. A couple of teachers, again, that are high school teachers, enjoy working with younger kids, so they provide a program, Little Lab Coats or Science, Scientist Training Academy. I usually stop by those programs, take pictures, see how things are going, and it's, it's really a fun experience to see how much our buildings are used 12 months of the year. And, and I have a really good site for that because most of the work I do is in the summer, but then throughout the school year, it's evenings and weekends. This is a video I'll show you. One of the popular classes this summer was a college essay-writing workshop, and we had some folks teach it in the past, and I couldn't come up with anybody, so I reached out to Larry Wall. He sent an email out, and we had a couple of volunteers to teach this class. So here is Erica from Thomas. So, here is Erica from Thomas.
Hi, my name is Erica Stuff. I am an English teacher at Thomas, and this summer, I taught a college essay writing class for college admissions. We brought in some admissions counselors from local colleges and went step-by-step with the writing process for students to get a jump on their college admissions essay. I taught two sections, two different weeks. It was a lot of fun, and a lot of great stories came out because of it.
So, the programs are fee-based. One of my goals has always been to find some, sorry, I don't often do this. Go ahead, Laura, thanks. Oh, stop, I have to stop it first.
I think so.
Erica will just keep going.
Erica, down here.
Gotcha. Here's some of the photos of some of the programs that are led by Webster School teachers. Goat yoga, very popular. In all the schools, the elementary schools, we work with the Music Co-op to offer music lessons to Webster kids. As you can see, some art classes and lots of sports opportunities. The one thing that I was mentioning is the classes are fee-based. Be great at some point to be able to offer the opportunity to kids in our district that don't have the funds to take a college essay class. I can tell you that when someone reaches out to me and I reach out to the instructor or the coach, I've never heard no. I'll let, absolutely. We will let that student in. So, that really speaks to what Glenn and Laura were talking about. The relationships go on, you know, beyond the school classroom and beyond the school year. Very generous with the coaches and the teachers in the summer. So, one thing that's changed dramatically, if you look at Summer '22, we had 23 sports camps in one league. This summer, we had 43 sports camps, and that was pretty much from June 26 until August 17. Those are programs that I oversee, making sure that there's insurance, making sure that all the coaches are certified, making sure that the facilities they need are ready, the doors are open, the fields are lined, the tennis nets are up. So, that was a big increase in terms of how I spend my summer. When you look at 43, you may think there's not 43 sports. Exactly. But a football coach runs four camps. A baseball camp runs one camp. The basketball coaches combine and together run five camps for different ages for different weeks. So, the way that this works is they pay a fee to use whatever facility, and some of the coaches go through Webster Community Ed for registration insurance. The majority of them go on their own and do it their own. But I need to make sure that we have insurance and that the staff are certified in case there's an emergency. So, we do this across the district. Many of your kids may have participated in some of this. Here's Andrew Welker. He coaches girls and boys varsity tennis at Trader.
Hi, my name is Andrew Welker, and I coach the girls and boys varsity tennis teams at Webster Trader. This summer, my coaching staff and I decided we wanted to offer tennis camps here at Trader. So, we called it the Lakeside Tennis Camp. We offered two different weeks. We had about 27 register for the first week. We had 32 for the second week, and it was just a fantastic experience. Running it through the community ed program was, was very beneficial to us. Took a lot of the extra work out of our hands, and we got to focus on just providing the best experience on the tennis courts as humanly possible.
So, what community ed does, when we host a camp, is we advertise it in the program guide, we manage registration, we manage the rosters, the attendance, and then the coaches and the student athletes are covered under the, the school district insurance. So, hit stop, and then, yeah. Thank you to my lovely assistant, Mrs. Blue. Just some pictures of some of the staff that I work with, and some of the coaches and teachers that did programs this summer. So, I would say probably the biggest piece of my job is doing facility scheduling for community groups, all kinds of groups. What my role is, you can read that. I would say the biggest piece is making sure that groups have insurance, making sure that I coordinate with the custodians, the scheduling secretary, the principal, the AV folks. There's a lot of requests for stages, which is a very niche type of arrangement because of the cost of all of the equipment. I've been having a great response this year from PTSA. When you see a flyer talking about what's happening at Willink, you get excited. I get worried. Why don't I have a Department of Health certificate from those groups? So, those are the things, you know, that I'm making sure that our kids and families are safe with. It's going really well thus far, but, you know, a lot happens throughout the year with PTSA folks, doing a wonderful job as volunteers. I also have to hire sentries and supervisors. You'll see that we had 100, I think, 60 baseball games this summer. I needed to have supervisors for 130. Luckily, I only supervised about four this year, so that was kind of a relief. And then I check in with the schools to make sure that things have gone well with the renters, and also prepare the invoices for our, our financial staff. Here's obviously some of our users. Things go really well, easy, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, PTSA. What takes a lot more time is on September 24, we're having a girls' lacrosse tournament. We expect about 400 kids, 1,000 guests. So, porta-potties are coming in, vendors are coming in. We have to make sure the fields are lined. I have to make sure I have sentries, supervisors. So, I like to call myself the community athletic director sometimes with Brian Freeman's support. We have lots of kids participating in athletics in our school district. So, one of the things that has provided me the most relief, I would say, is Master Library. Brian Freeman, Blaine Cunningham, Brian Zimmer, and I'm sure lots of other people made a great decision in purchasing this program, and that has helped me to manage so much more. A lot of things I had to do by hand, I'm no longer doing that, chasing people, calling custodians, things like that. So, this enables everyone in the district to do things much more efficiently. With Master Library, I've been on tour with Brian Zimmer since last August, training all of the staff in the district on how to use Master Library. I manage all the accounts. Currently, there's 130 community accounts, and every request that comes through by everyone, I have to approve and review. So, I'm not sure we'll continue with that, just based on the volume. And we'll all get better at using Master Library, but it really is a lifesaver, and it automates so many of the things that I do. I also am a support for people in the district, and September will probably be busy, but I usually get about five to 15 calls or emails per week from staff asking me to troubleshoot on Master Library. Here's just a glimpse, I'll let you absorb some of it. So, we really started using Master Library maybe July 3. So, if you look at the top row, Sunday to Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., across the district, meaning curriculum programs, we had 3,000 requests. Group A, B, or C, which is community requests that occur after, you know, or occur, we have 3,700. So, in a very short time, we've already had 6,700 requests. And requests go from a meeting at 10 o'clock in a school to some special assembly, so it's across the board. So, again, I don't have to manage that. What I do have to manage is the second in the white, Monday to Friday, 2 to 11. So, the 2,800 are probably mostly athletics, schools plays, things like that. And in the short time we've been using, even though I have a year reflected, we've really been using Master Libraries for a couple of months. So, you can see what the use is like in the afternoons, Monday to Friday. And then the last stat, which next year will be much different, is, again, this is for a couple of months, what the use looks like on the weekends. And I, if anyone has any questions about a day, a location, I could have drowned you with stats. Master Library tells us all of this with a button. So, if you want to know how your school's being used on the weekends, if you want to know how many, between the community ed program, if you want to know how many eight-year-olds are in Spanish class, you know, those are things that I can get for you, if, if that's ever helpful. So, a big piece of what I do is the athletic field usage. So, you can take a minute to absorb that. I chose to put it on one slide in case anyone wanted to compare. One of the directives I have from the athletic directors is to make sure things are relatively even. I got really lucky with baseball turf, 53 games at Trader and 52 at Thomas. So, you can just, softball turfs aren't used a lot because of the resources we have in the town at Ridge, but you take a look at Semler Fields, that is just community use. It's not scolastic sports. We house soccer and girls' and boys' lacrosse just about every night at Semler. And for those of you that have tried to park there on a school night, I think you would understand that. Just a quick hey, who I work with. I, I think I've talked to Blaine Cunningham three times in the last day. All the youth sports groups, Webster Theater Guilds, Neil Flog, principals, secretaries, Jenna and Justin in AV and Theater provide a lot of support for me, the custodians. And then looking ahead, what I'm working on, because of increased requests for our stages and the cost of some of the equipment that we have, a few years ago, with the help of Jenna and Michael Roller, we developed some specific guidelines. We need to revamp those guidelines for the increase in requests. We may not be able to honor the requests, but after a couple of years, we've realized that we just need to do some fine-tuning. So, when, when folks come to use or rent a facility, they do get, you know, rules and things like that. And then the other thing, which Brian is aware of, I'll be looking to kind of brainstorm some staffing help from May to mid-August. It gets, we're busy. It, it's overwhelming. I have great support from supervisors, but as you can see from the usage, definitely, you know, need some support. I tell the, the selfishly sad story of one Saturday morning about a month ago, I got a call at 9:30 from a youth group, "Could we play at 11 on a turf, Jane?" I go, "When?" "Well, today." You know, so 9:30 in the morning, my cellphone rings, and then about a month prior to that, and these are just two examples of how busy and how much everyone wants to use, 10:01, I get a call on a Sunday night in June, are we all set for November? So, we have lots of excited people using our spaces. We're happy to accommodate, and as Brian said, working towards that balance of keeping kids busy, keeping kids safe, and not overdoing it. So, I know I probably took longer than most, but we do a lot out of the community ed office. So, and again, I can get your stats anytime if you would like any of that.
Thank you very much, Jane. Thank you very much, Laura. Thank you very much, Glenn. We appreciate all three of you and all the work that you're doing, and that now ends my report for the night. We'll now ask Mrs. Land and Mr. Alquist to come on up and join us. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'm here with Greg Alquist, who wears lots of hats in our district, but one of them is Director of our Teacher Center, and a lot of his work focuses on professional development around the district. So, you're going to hear tonight about a lot of teacher-driven PD, but I do want to talk about all of our staff and the fact that professional development is not limited just to teachers and administrators, but our Buildings and Ground staff does professional development. Our paraprofessionals do professional development. Our nurses do professional development, and many of our employees have to do professional development in order to keep their certification. So, our staff is pretty up to date on the work that they're doing around the district, which we're very proud of. The, the presentation tonight's going to talk about a lot of different kinds of PD. I want to highlight that our PD happens all the time. Sometimes it's accidental. Sometimes you can walk by a room, if you're a teacher, and hear something, and you say, "Oh, wait, I need to go talk to that teacher and see what's happening." And that happens frequently in our district. Sometimes it's informal, so it's a conversation over lunch between two different people. Two nurses get together and have a conversation about how something's going. Sometimes it's very formal, and tonight, you're going to hear some examples of that around workshops and mentoring. That would be formal examples of professional development. Finally, I'll leave you with this thought as we get started, which is professional development is not only a great resource for our teachers and a way for them to grow, but it's also a great retention tool. So, if we offer folks who work in our district the ability to grow in whatever they're doing, hopefully, they'll stay with us for a long time. So, that is something that we think about when we think about professional development. Greg, I'll turn it over to you.
I wanted to just begin by thanking Erin and for her support, and Robert, who I work very closely with in, in my work, and then Daria Parazzi, who is the administrative assistant that kind of helps make a lot of this run behind the scenes. So, I'm really grateful for a team that works with me. I did want to point out, during Jane's presentation, that teacher from Webster Thomas who ran the college essay writing, I actually share a classroom with her, and she's my former student.
How does that make you feel, right?
And right next door to us, she did, she liked you better, clearly. Had a better, better English teacher than a social studies teacher, clearly. That is, that is why we do what we do. It has been nothing short of a gift, actually, to share a little bit of space with her, because she is an excellent teacher, just brilliant. And so, there's nothing more rewarding in many ways for me that has been at this job for just years. And, and to see that, and to see, to have in some way the work that I do support her and support teachers like her. So, here's, I want to just share a little bit with you this evening, we can advance that, I got it. What I want to do is actually ground this work, this presentation, in two ways. The first is this, and this is, we're going to, we're going to center on kind of learner-centric. This is the, this is the why and the how of professional learning, in my estimation. That is to say, we do this for the sake of learners, not just teachers or any of our staff, but also for students. If we're doing professional learning well, it's going to show up in our students and their experience. So, I want to make this point first about learner-centered. The second point that I'll make just right at the very end is the continuous support that we offer. So, in some ways, I'm kind of riffing off of this always-learning part of our vision, just doing it in reverse. I'm going to talk about us being learner-centric first, and then at the end, we'll just kind of hit really quickly. of hit really quickly on it being the continuous portion of the support that we offer our staff. So to break down the learner-centric kind of idea, I want to just quickly move through these three anchors, to introduce the idea of an always-learning track, to kind of give you a snapshot of what some of that learning looks like, some of the priority shifts that we've done, and then thirdly, give you just a quick sneak peek into the induction program, and some of you were able to be there at the kickoff of that, at the new staff orientation that happened right before the start of school, to give away a little bit of the thunder. We have 76, but in our meeting today, we identified five new staff that are still, we are still hiring for. So we have 80, we will, by the time we're done, over 80 new staff that we will have hired this year, and that's in addition to the almost 100 that we hired last year. That is a lot of turnover, when you stop and consider the WTA numbers. Right, Dave?
I was going to say, right, Dave?
So the always-learning track is one new vehicle of learning that we have tried to provide our staff. And what it does is it breaks it down into three different components, an in-person launch to the learning, where we gathered actually in this space, because we believe that there's something really important and tangible and concrete that happens when we do things in person. That became, in some ways, the launch to a longer series of learning that happened independently through the Google Classroom. So people had tasks and reflection. We did it in the Google Classroom, because participants could reflect on certain readings or tasks, and then respond to each other. So it wasn't just what happened at the launch altogether, but there was a continuation of that learning. And then there was a processing that happened in the final step, where we gathered across a screen, and then used other mediums of being able to share. You know, a chat is kind of a really, really helpful medium, to be able to exchange a wide variety of thoughts, rather than have just a few voices dominate, but used it as a reflection tool in the end. And this was part of a new design that kind of Robert and I launched as part of the diversity, equity, and inclusion belonging kind of work. And what we also, the other key component to this is not just those three steps of learning, but it's what came after. That is to say, if you opted into this, you also committed, not just to learn, but also to share the learning. And so all of those learners that entered into that always-learning track, which, by the way, we ran four different quarterly tracks. And so all of those learners were turnkeying some of their learning, whether it was in kind of some small groups that happened, that happened outside the school day, some actually shared information in faculty meetings, or department, or curriculum meetings. So the learning wasn't contained, but that it was spread. And ultimately, that's the best evidence of learning, is when you actually are teaching and sharing it. This also was extended and kind of turnkeyed in a different way. The model was adapted by our mathematics department, and the algebra team actually used and borrowed the same kind of idea for the always-learning track, and kind of adapted it, and pulled together work across buildings to kind of do this work in a slightly different way. So just a different way, a deliberate, intentional approach to try to encourage learning in that way. The second piece, and this kind of always, this learner-centric approach that we're highlighting tonight, are just some of the shifts. And you can see those shifts, and I just want to explain the first one, that in the past, we have supported conferences for every WTA member, that we will provide, some years it's been $400 for a conference, or some years it's been $500, it's been right in that ballpark. And we set aside, as a policy board, we set aside a certain amount of funding for that. This year, we are putting a stake in the ground and almost doubling our support for conferences. And this really is with the idea that we really believe that each teacher and each educator in this district can identify what the best learning priority is for them, and then to access that learning. Because sometimes the learning and the resources are in-house, sometimes those are best accessed outside of the house. So providing that opportunity, and not all will use that full funding, obviously, but it opens up especially opportunities to go to national conferences, where there's some really helpful learning. The only other thing I'll highlight on this is both the letters training and Monroe One BOSI's training speak to another shift in professional learning that I've discerned over time, and that is that we are trying to create common and wide learning experiences for our staff. So rather than kind of here and there and tailored, and which we still do kind of see the value of that, but there also is something powerful when it's more systematic and it's wider. So that's another shift that we've noticed in professional learning, and Francine could certainly talk a lot more at length about some of the real shifts and gains that we've seen in the letters training, just anecdotally. Teachers have told me that that letters training, the science of reading, is some of the best professional development they've ever had, and changed the way that they teach. I had a conversation with a 15-year veteran that said she is doing things differently in light of that. And that is because of the commitment that we've made to that type of learning.
I'll speak to the learner-centric part of letters, which is we're now moving to the majority of our elementary teachers going through that training, but we're moving to train the trainer. So we've now created a leadership opportunity for our staff to be the letters trainer, which is a great opportunity for people to be part of the leadership of the work we're doing curriculum.
So much more to say, but I'm just going to be concise here. You're all thanking me now. So the last piece for this learner-centric piece that I just wanted to highlight is, one thing that we're trying to do a little bit differently, and that is, we are encouraging all of our mentors to spend five to 10 minutes per week just dropping in the classroom of their mentee, to just see some portion of what they are doing in their professional context, whether it's a classroom or another professional setting. And the idea here really is to keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening, and to give a little bit of extra grounding to conversations that mentors and mentees have. Often, if you let mentoring go its natural course, it often becomes a check-in on how you're doing, and can I provide any kind of support or resource that you need to teach tomorrow? And there's nothing wrong with that, but when the conversation becomes grounded in an experience that is being seen and shared and can be debriefed, we think that that is going to provide some additional opportunities for support in ways that we haven't done previously. So we're kind of excited to see. It does require some logistics management to make that happen, but we have had support of building administration to try to be creative as we can in that time. And I already kind of hinted at the numbers attached to that, so that we are, this also means that there are great opportunities for those mentors to grow too, and that's the flip side, right, of any kind of mentoring experience, that the mentor has the opportunity to grow, and that is the other piece of them being able to observe and notice and be able to ask really smart questions, is that what I've really tried to encourage mentors is to slow down. Rather than to speak into the situation when you notice, that's great, if you notice something, but then process that, and then think of the right question that will prompt reflection. So that's the piece that we're really trying to work on in mentoring, rather than speaking immediately, to slow that process down, to think carefully, to ask the question, and create a conversation that becomes a means and an opportunity for reflection. And so then finally, so here's our learner-centric kind of, that we just kind of focus on. So now we're going to go to the always part, which is that kind of continuous support that we're trying to provide. And this is just a quick snapshot, to kind of like hint at the way that we try to support year-round and then career-round kind of support, that we provide that new staff orientation and provide supports throughout the year, through quarterly meetings, through these mentoring programs, and then in addition to that kind of hint that we gave today about those drop-ins, we also, last fall, last October, we relaunched the Teachers Teach Teachers program on superintendent's conference day, and it was universally applauded, to have it back, and it was just good to be back. So we're following the same format again. It's making it the triumphant return, part two of Teachers Teach Teachers, and tapping our staff. But also, it is a little bit of a misnomer, because we are bringing in a lot of community partners and other outside experts to kind of share expertise. So while it is kind of branded TTT, there is a lot of expertise that we're kind of drawing on from the community and outside, as well as part of that. And the last thing I just want to highlight in terms of innovation is, might actually be better framed as ways that we're trying to encourage being present in each other's context. And I hinted that with the drop-in, but the Peer Learning Lab idea is grabbing a group of colleagues that are trying to tackle a problem, doing some research around it, and then having somebody actually implement the change, and the others observing. So what we're really talking about, I think, in implementing in our professional learning, is being present in each other's, and like learning walks, and observing, and being there, but using that as a means of reflection. So I think at least that provides a little bit of a snapshot of professional learning. All I'll say for in terms of metrics and numbers is that, for a whole host of reasons, all of the learning sessions and proposals that we have processed this year, as well as participants, have all increased from last year 50 to 100%, and in some cases, over 100%. Lots of reasons for that, but I think, and some of it is actually the way we track, and then also like a Teachers Teach Teachers event that kind of ramps those numbers up. But I think that's evidence of kind of the importance and our commitment here in the district to always learning. Any questions?
Questions for us?
Going back to the slide about, is the 900-person, like, WTA member, that's a huge investment in your staff, and that's going to lead to a lot of retention, I think. That's a great idea, to really invest individually, not just as like a lump sum.
Exactly.
Each person matters enough that you're going to invest in their own learning. That's huge.
It sends a message, right?
It does, absolutely.
You said it's a great combination of using outsourced, you know, outside resources, and then you've got your Teachers Teach and your inside resources. It's a great combination of using that knowledge from both. That's fantastic.
And I mean, that really respects the fact that some really deep learning costs more money. I mean, and sometimes teachers, you know, can't necessarily afford that, but that lets a teacher know that they can travel to get something that really means something to them, and that's pretty great. So thank you for caring about our teachers so much.
I just want to also name, I remember the conversation that we had, and it was with Brian and Erin, when we were kind of floating that idea, and it was their support that also makes it a critical component of that.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I just need a motion to approve the professional development plan for 2324 as presented. So Jen, second, Charlie, all in favor? Aye. Thank you so much.
Both of you, thank you.
All right. All right, we are moving on to board business. We tabled A, so we're moving on to B, the tax cert and small claims update.
Yeah, so just want to give information to the board here about, since it is tax season, what is going on with the tax certuraries against the district. I highlighted three new ones for you there that are new this year, but with the ongoing exposure, I know many times I come to the board and ask for approval on agreements, so I just always like to do an overview of what's happening this time of year for you, if you have any questions.
Is that from previous years?
Yes, it's previous years.
Okay, and they're still?
It's still technically out there, because it's on the property.
Okay. And you're comfortable with the amount that we have? It looks like the 4,000 that we have in reserves.
Yeah, we actually had planned to put more into that, but after talking with the auditors and seeing what came through this year, I think we're well-reserved in this area.
This was just information?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
If you have any questions on where the properties are, because sometimes they have different names than what we know them as around town, just let me know.
Medicare changes is also information, correct?
Yeah, this is for information. I just wanted to let the board be aware of some changes, since we are part of the consortium of things that are going on. So I just did a little overview, updated you. There's been some changes around the consortiums around us, which prompted Monroe County districts to start asking some questions about, are we really providing the best plans for our retirees right now? So we sent out a request for proposal to all the major providers to see what was going on in the Medicare marketplace, to expand coverage, expand benefits. And really, we needed a dedicated, there are so many over 65 retirees that are part of the consortium, somebody with dedicated Medicare knowledge, with a dedicated Medicare customer service line. So that was part of our RFP, and, you know, we had six scoring areas with the committee makeup from across the county and across bargaining units represented there as well. And, you know, MVP and United Healthcare were not moved forward. One was very non-competitive, and one did not respond. They were interviewed, reference-checked, and so moving forward, starting January 1 with Aetna, the RASH One Board voted to approve the recommendation. So we've begun communicating that out with our Medicare retirees. That's beginning to be communicated across the county. Yesterday, we met with the Aetna implementation team, they were fantastic. Next week, we have a Webster-specific phone call with them to talk about setting up in-person and online meetings with all of our retirees. Just some major points of emphasis, because this plan was not the cheapest that the committee recommended, but what they had was that customer service that outweighed everything else. It's a national plan, so there's no county restriction anymore, like currently retirees have. Lower co-pays, there is some Medicare-covered dental. That doesn't mean that the dental plan is going away, it's just some additional dental, and a little bit lower on the prescription drugs as well, as some of the highlights. But every retiree will get a summary that shows a comparison. So we have about 1,000 retirees, maybe some that are here tonight that might have gotten a letter from me.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, I trust you. I want to say that. I want to start there. But boy, do I have people calling me up. Like, I have anything to do with it.
Change is hard, and that's what we've explained to everybody. We would not be doing this if it wasn't better for them. And I think it'd just take a little bit of time for people to see that. That's why there was a large committee involved with it. And we're talking over 5,000 specific retirees in the county that are in the process of going through this. I think we have, for far too long, we've had a dominant player that has taken for granted in a lot of their people. And so this was a response to that.
The one question I keep getting asked, and it's clear here, was, what about dental?
So this, yeah, the dental plan, the SmileSaver everybody retires with stays, but, you know, I've learned through, over the years, with trying to become more versed in Medicare, that, you know, some of those late-night plans, that say zero co-pays and all that, they have this weird kind of dental benefit for it, because most people out in the private don't have a dental plan like we offer to retirees. So that seems to be a common question, but this has nothing to do with the current dental plan of any retirees.
Have you had, where are some of the, have you had people reaching out to you with concerns?
We just have people calling, because, you know, it's a change.
Okay, but not like, there's nothing like about the plan that really stands out to people as something that's detrimental?
Other than it's just different. And Aetna's the largest provider in New York State. They have several consortiums, school, they have the entire Finger Lakes municipalities, so like all the towns and villages that have banded together have Aetna plans. All of New York City is on Aetna plans, so it's...
The two big ones that we've heard mostly are really that customer service is much better, and then really looking at the fact that it covers nationwide, so now people who traveled in retirement have that choice of being covered regardless of where they are.
Yeah, you don't have to live anywhere.
So there's no more of this out-of-network necessarily?
The 50.1% rule is gone, you could be anywhere. And that is a huge benefit to a lot of our retirees that want that flexibility.
Compared to the cost that you pay now, is it cheaper, or is it, on your one slide, you said that they... The current provider had reduced rates?
Because they were worried about this happening, because they saw it happening in other parts of the state, so unprompted, they just were able to drop their rates.
Which is like unheard of. Who'd...
Yeah.
But so, but it is...
Hey, why weren't you dropping those rates before we started to have these questions?
And I don't, I think I'm pretty grateful for what I have right now.
Yeah, and I think people will be pleasantly surprised when we get into, when we, now that we have some direction, we can get into the weeds and do that comparison side by side. Yeah, and, you know, I've told everybody, I wouldn't make this change, that I wouldn't do it for, you know, the plans that I'll be on, you know, and it's, you know, I wouldn't do it, you know, for...
Yeah, that's down the road.
I don't know, I would have aged a little bit during tonight's presentation.
All right, thank you. Under D, we have our second reading of the sexual harassment policy. There's no real updates, no real changes. I don't think anyone had any questions. And this is all law-based change, correct?
Yes, yep. Just an update to the law.
Yep. Everybody, so, can I have a motion to approve the second reading of the sexual harassment policy? So move Shanna, second, Jen, all in favor? Aye. All right, we're moving on to Board Member highlights. I know we're a little bit behind, I apologize. I don't know if anyone has any quick updates. I know PTSA's are just kind of getting going. We've had a lot of updates with opening schools, so I don't know if there's anything that was missed that anybody wants to add. Start rolling Monday. Yeah, Plank North is later this month, too.
I attended the online DEWIT PTSA, but there's real confusion in technology.
Yeah.
Last night? It's okay, it's state.
No, well, not state road, but in, I was in the wrong place with other people for a while. You know, following the link that they gave me.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, anyways.
The state, so state road was last night, PTSA meeting, and it was, and Brian did a great job of talking through the capital improvement vote with the parents. And unfortunately, there was a technology issue, so you couldn't hear anybody in the meeting. I don't know if you knew that.
For a minute there, I thought I had everybody's voice, but then I thought they just went silent, because it was so detailed.
It was so detailed. But I did add in after, because I was physically there, I would, that, one of the things I thought was really, so I loved seeing the banners out front, like when you came in, there was two different sides, and it explained what's happening at this school, what's happening across the district. They're beautiful, it's big, it catches your eye, I thought that was fantastic. And then I just pointed out to them that at those two community meetings, that campus construction is there, and La Bella is there, so that, you know, you have other resources there explaining, you know, you have the company that did the inspection that's explaining why these different things are needed in the district. So it's an opportunity for them to really get, you know, to get access to all sorts of sources of information that they may not have had last time. And it definitely felt like a more positive experience with the parents there, you know, giving their feedback. So I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
I loved it. And, and they had great questions for the people that showed up online. And I think I'm, I feel great that there's so much good information explaining to parents and families what's going on for the vote. I'm already getting promises altered, I guess I have a promise. Well, and like the student liaisons mentioned, the Schrader Library, September 21st, the Thomas Library, September 28th, vote at 6:30, are other opportunities for friends, family to all come and ask questions and get more information.
Yeah, and that feedback was really listened to from the community. It was very thoughtful consideration under what could be completed with the aid that we're getting from the state, and not having an impact on taxpayers.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. So just a friendly reminder to the public that we've gotten all this information in advance and read through it. So unless anyone has any questions. I have one quick question. Is that the same pizza provider that we've had in previous years? Craig, will you?
It varies. Some years, it's been Salvator's, some years, it's been Pizza Hut. Sometimes Mark's. Yeah, Craig, you're a little, I'm not sure.
Okay. Kids, I know last year, I wasn't sure if it was the same provider. Last year, I heard, you hear, for some reason, I hear feedback on the pizza. Like, that's something people love to share.
So the school cafeteria pizza? This is for concession stands and other, other usage, because that, there's no way any local pizza provider could possibly produce enough pizza, or possibly create a pizza that is compliant with the calorie rules and all the other, like salt, that you couldn't, yeah. Yeah, you could not get a local pizza vendor to go with the salt regulations either.
That's good to know. Brian, you are a plethora of information. You know that. All right, with that, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight? So move Jen, second, Maria, all in favor? Aye. All right, we don't have any visitors speaking, so my only other update is that next Tuesday, we're meeting, September 19th, here. We will be starting early, we have an executive session at 4:45. We'll exit that, we're going to meet some new staff, and then we will re-adjourn at 6 o'clock for our workshop, just a friendly reminder for us. I don't know if you have anything else?
I don't, I'm good.
We did the dates for the capital improvement vote and information.
The vote is a trade on the October 11th, yep.
Perfect. All right, sounds good. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? So move Carol, second. Shanna, all in favor? Aye.